I'm not chasing you and then I thought, oh my god. They're like so mad at me. Then I start going guilty because I'm still there, honey.
I love them a lot, but.
Hey, well, it's six thirty. Should we get started? Is this all of us? Where's? Where's Dave?
I don't know.
Okay. I've got a little soapboxing to do. Hope you guys don't mind. Um.
We only have half an hour.
It's only limitation.
Really? Okay.
How long is soapbox do you want to go on?
It's not gonna be a long one. It's only this long, okay? No, so just wanted to say, I was elected two years ago as mayor and with it comes certain responsibilities, which is, you know, running the staff. And it's taken some time to get to know the ropes. And some of the staff wasn't sure what to expect of me. And I personally feel with that we have now we have a great working relationship. And I've come to trust my staff. They are loyal, hardworking, great work ethic and have tribal knowledge that is so valuable. Retention is a huge challenge in city government. I hear from all my other mayor friends. Uh, all of our rates for fire, police, water, schools, all that are increasing to come combat that. I mean, everybody's having that trouble. We haven't needed to raise city taxes for a decade. Um, to replace some of these folks, I believe, would take more people and a ton of time. This policy should protect the city as well as the employees. Both can be accomplished, in my mind, by respecting the employees and what they do and what they continue to offer. And I hopefully we can have this on the December seventh agenda for a vote. That's my plan is to have it on that for a vote. So we want to do it with this council because otherwise we're gonna have to start over.
No.
I'm not gonna do that, so.
You don't want to sit through another three hour meeting?
You guys, it wasn't that bad.
It's great.
Okay, and and when it comes right down to it, it's really up to the council to make the decision, so.
Well, I read through the edits and I think that like Liam had captured oh, most of what we had talked about and um, I there I my I have seven comments now versus last time, so this this should be this we should we should get through this a lot faster.
You're using the one that Dave sent out to everybody?
Is that the one with the purple? The one was in the Dropbox?
Oh, no. So go ahead. When we get to Dave's section, I have his pulled up.
Yeah, and they're really they're really simple.
Okay.
Um, background checks three, seven. Do we need to spell out? I know we changed the language. Do we need to spell out distinctly that the city will pay for that? Or are we okay not indicating?
We're okay not indicating. It's fine. The city can still pay for it. It doesn't prevent us.
Okay.
If you want to put the city into position where they will pay for it all the time, no matter what, then we can put it in there. But it doesn't matter. City can still pay for it.
And I thought. I mean, I thought that was what we had decided that we were if we were gonna require them, we were gonna pay for them. But I I mean, I'm okay with the ambiguous ambiguity too. Um. And then um, this some of these like just more um, so I thought on three, seven, where it's like the city shall submit to, I thought we had changed it changed it to may be required to submit to a criminal history.
I don't recall, and obviously I missed that edit if that was supposed to be, but that is fine. We can easy make that change.
Okay, I can then I can send these to you.
Got it. I'll update it right here.
And then on six, five, outside employment, in my notes, I had just I and they were very like very quick notes. I thought we had decided that no documentation was required, but am I remembering that wrong?
I think we talked about it. Lots of people have outside employment. And as long as it doesn't interfere with their job duties. I don't know.
It's kind of like this gig for all of us.
Yeah, cuz my notes had said we like that no document, no notification and approval was required.
Uh, my last edit on that one now says upon is your say upon notification and written approval from the mayor and the employee's department head. Yeah, that's the last edit I have on it too.
Josh, are you remembering?
I wasn't at that meeting.
So you wanted to just say upon notify?
Well, just no employee may engage in additional employment, which in any manner interferes with proper. I don't know, even just that last sentence.
I like that. It if it interferes, so just, yeah.
Cuz we don't.
Common sense.
Yeah, we don't wanna, we don't need to micromanage people's time.
Yeah, I think you just take away that first sentence.
Okay, done.
Um. Okay, nine, two. Annual leave, personal time off PTO on one B. Um, so months of continual service with approval of I I had here that we had the mayor and department head.
You're on about nine, two B?
Mm hmm.
So this one says the mayor and the applicable department head.
Okay, that must have been.
Was that in there?
Perfect. Um. And then my biggest, my biggest thing is I still don't know, looking at this, what the difference between flex time, comp time and overtime is. And if I'm as a like layperson, not able to decipher that, like, I don't think that, I mean, i- if can someone explain it to me cuz I and I've been told that like we don't have overtime and like.
Here's the um, the short version. Um, overtime is overtime, over forty hours, right, in a week. Um, comp time is when you is in, I'm gonna say in lieu of overtime. When you've worked extra.
You get that in like vacation time?
In time.
Okay.
Like, let's say, maybe this isn't a good example, but let's say somebody worked four extra hours, okay? Be like, dude, choke four hours later. You know, the next time around. That's comp time.
That's tracked.
Yes.
But I feel like that's flex time.
No, it's a flex time is you get to flex your hour based on.
That's what he was saying. You you work four extra hours, you come in later four hours.
Compensation time is you work four hour overtime. You get that four hours. You have to tell them when you want your time off.
Flex time just means instead of eight to five, you can come in from nine to six or.
How is that different from flex time?
Because you're not rolling it over. You're not going over the forty hours and using the comp time. Flex time is just you can, you know, when they're plowing streets or doing those other things.
Sorry, so.
Yeah, so flex time versus comp. Comp is actually when you've reached that over forty, but you're using it in time versus being paid at overtime as a rate. So it's just a.
Flex time just means you can adjust your schedule.
Yeah, flex times means it's adjustable schedule. Comp time means instead of getting paid, you're using that as a time for you're getting it.
And you can bank that most.
Compensated time.
And so then what's what's the four hours on Friday?
Right? We have four hours.
That's supposed to be.
It's a type of flex time because what it is is when they do work more, that just eats into what that is. It is confusing, but that's what it's for.
I think the hardest problem is we've got so many employees that, you know, because of call late nights or plowing or all these other things, we can't just set a regular schedule and say, Kay, you're only working eight to five and then have all these, well, how do we deal with all the other out of hour time? So that's what they're trying to set up is to accommodate that.
So then, when is it overtime versus when is it comp time?
Overtime is over forty.
Right.
Do they choose? Is it overtime or comp?
Pay time and a half. If we were to pay them time and a half instead of compensating them time for working over over forty, then that'd be overtime.
Do they choose or like how is that determined?
And see, that's not, I don't feel like that's spelled out here, like it's like, when is it comp time? When is it overtime? And like, I think that there should be.
So it's comp time or overtime, no, both. Right. I mean, like, at least in one instance, if they work extra, they either get overtime or comp. But it's all tracked?
They've been doing the time tracking.
Yeah, talked about. It does talk about. We should go find it in here. Hang on.
Yeah, cuz it calls the four hours a flex time per week, but really flex time, we're saying this, they can adjust their hours if they started plowing at five in the morning. And that makes sense, like, but then is this flex time or is it like something else?
What section are you in?
I'm sorry, eleven.
Seven?
One.
Oh, eleven, one. Eleven, seven is the comp time one.
That's full time employee shall incur four hours of flex time per week. So we're calling those four hours flex time.
Oh, right. Because the offices only open half day on Friday. Right?
Right.
So that is flex time. So Mackenzie's here, not on comp time or overtime. She's here on flex time.
Okay.
This is what she's doing right now.
Right, right.
Because she's.
Yeah, I know the evening was like that helps pay for some of that.
Right.
I just wasn't sure on the. Yeah, the definitions maybe.
Mm hmm.
Um, as long as the employees get it, but then it's like, but what if something happened to all our employees and now we got and now it's like, no one knows what this is.
Because we have the set hours, which aren't forty, but they require the extra four flex meeting meetings like this or, you know, outside of those time hours.
Call them to pick up trash.
Right.
Snow.
Yeah, but once they've exceeded that time, then they are on either the overtime pay or compensation pay.
And I don't think any in here it indicates like. Um, it just says, I mean, do they need to, it just says overtime or um, allocated comp time. And so should we add something that it's like, I mean, how are we? Are is it on their timesheets? Are they saying like, I want this as overtime? I want this as comp time or how is that? How was how are they indicating how they want that broken down?
I don't know. That's a that's a question for like Lindsay or Andrea. I don't know the details of how they do that, but overtime is regulated by, I mean, that's a federal law thing, so. Uh, is it two eighty? Two oh eight? Yeah, I think it's two oh eight.
In excess of the two oh eight flex times. Yeah, cuz it says in excess of the two oh eight flex time hours, they shall be compensated for overtime or allocated compensatory time.
Yeah, there it is.
So they use their two hundred and eight flex time also. Okay.
So you're worried about the tracking part of it?
Well, I'm just.
We're rarely gonna ever hit overtime.
Well, oh, so then when?
Ever.
So if we don't, so if it's like, I'm I'm still so confused. So it's like, when then when does comp time come in?
So go to eleven, seven.
I'm there.
He chooses comp time, yeah.
But that's after the two hundred and eight flex time is used. So really, they're rarely using.
But it says it mayor and to work addition time in addition and in excess of the two hundred and eight flex time, they shall be compensated for overtime or comp time. So that means both overtime and comp time in excess, after they've hit two oh eight, they get to choose.
Yes.
But before, but they don't kick in until that.
Right.
And it's one or the other.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and those then that's tracked by the department supervisors and the comp time must be used within thirty days from the date it is accrued. Yeah.
And all I'm saying is like, I'm like, if this is confusing for me and unclear for me, like.
Well, I do like that addition of the in excess to the two hundred and eight flex hour. And I and I that that helps clarify it to me is like, oh, I get it.
And I think that's a good, I think that's a great improvement and maybe maybe a good like solution for this is like. I I don't know if it's like a definition of like.
What it is, we could just say comp time and overtime as defined by the Fair League of Standard Act.
Okay.
If we wanted to, and then you just go with that.
Well, it does say that employee compensation for overtime and allocation of compensatory comp, whatever time, shall be governed by applicable federal state law.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. But I don't know if that addresses what you're.
That means somebody would just who it who it would be confused. You have to go look up what the definition is essentially.
But it's covered in federal law.
Yep.
The difference of.
Yep.
Um.
I always get nervous trying to recover that cuz then federal law will change a definition or do something or out of date. So I I always get really hesitant to try to reput all the federal stuff into this kind of a thing.
And then in that.
Yeah, it's best to just reference it.
In that two hundred and eight hours, does that count like sickly vacation? It's just two hundred hours worked.
That's the four hours a week for the year.
But they use a lot of those hours during the winter, maybe when they're plowing.
So that comes back.
So it's kind of a yearly thing. All these hours are put together.
That's where that number comes from.
Yeah. Um.
But on a really bad winter, that's when they would exceed it.
And you might get some overtime or comp time.
Yes.
Okay.
So is that okay then, Katie?
Yeah, I and I but I, yeah, I think it's fine. I think it's still very confusing, but um, I I understand.
Did you have another one? Comment? Question?
That's it.
Okay, so do we want to address Dave's that he was gonna bring up cuz he mentioned it to me? Um, and his comments there, if anybody has Dave's recent one, I'm starting at the very end, sorry. But on sixteen, nine, he had indicated that he would like to propose that only department heads on the public work side take home vehicles since the argument is that they can respond quicker to callouts. I have been told that only department heads are doing the callouts.
That's not always true.
I'm fine leaving it. I don't have a problem leaving it the way it is, that it's up to the mayor and the police department head. I I don't think the city council needs to be regulating that kind of stuff. I think the mayor and department heads can regulate that.
And I really, I like that we added the like ten mile radius. I feel like that's like a a good protection and.
I don't, I don't have a problem leaving it.
I, there's nothing wrong with it. That's just definitely a policy choice you guys can make. Um.
Is it really if someone's abusing it or it doesn't look like it's being used, mayor and the department head can change it? So. And like, say, if someone else suddenly changes, then I might have to go through the whole city council process to get that approved, so.
Um, Dave Chuck also had an issue with flex time, but he's not here to bring it up. Um, I don't know if anybody saw his comment. He was just wondering if flex time should be applicable to all employees. Cuz he says it seems that it's mostly for snowplow work, but I think Mackenzie proves that it's not just.
Yeah, I think that's all of them.
Yes.
I feel like, I know they're always working like Fourth of July. Does that?
I mean, that includes all those kind of things and I don't.
Well, things like the like the Easter egg thing, you know, the Easter thing, there they are, you know. Uh, one thing about the this team, you know, they're dedicated and ready to go do whatever they need to whenever they need to. They just, you know, want the respect of, okay, I'm doing a job. Take care of me. I'll take care of you.
The flex time hours don't happen unless they're actually like worked, right? You don't, they don't, they're not just automatically getting four hours every paid period.
Yeah, they do get four hours because Friday they're only open half day.
Okay, regardless.
Paid forty for thirty six hours.
But then they're.
But then the four hours are used.
Times that they're doing all that other stuff is when it goes into play.
And then are those with with where the two hundred and eight hours? We're not, they have to work two hundred and eight hours, not counting the addition of those flex hours, right?
That is the flex hours.
Yeah, it is. They accumulate up to two hundred and eight hours of flex time.
I mean, the the hard part.
In the.
Yeah, I mean, the hard part we're looking at is if you said, okay, we want to keep you guys here an extra four hours and make you work forty hours. Well, then all of a sudden, we're gonna be throwing them into overtime. Every time we have a holiday, they gotta come to a meeting. So the compromise is is what we we say, Kay, we're gonna still pay your salary, but then we're gonna take those four hours to cover all that other stuff. So it's a hard, I mean, it's somewhere we have to balance.
Which I I think I'm okay with that. It's just, I think, cuz like, once you, if you're adding that four hours into the two hundred and eight, then essentially.
It's actually subtracting.
It's subtracted.
Oh.
That's how much four hours for every week. That's how that two hundred and eight, that's where that comes from.
Fourth of July would come out of that.
When they work Fourth of July or snowplow, then it subtracts from that two hundred and eight.
Okay, great.
Mackenzie's time is coming out of that.
Thank, that's that's.
And I think honestly, the half day Fridays helps make up lots of times are after hours. They're holidays, they're weekends, like they're kind of beaten about hours, so.
And I think we're moving.
I'm not bugging them all the damn time and.
So I think that's a fair trade.
Hours cuz, you know, people have brought up something. We've got some water. Yeah, it's those things happen. And so, yeah, they are. Most of those hours are being put in at night, weekends and all the other times, so. It it's a fine balance cuz, you know, we.
It's like in my job, you know, I I have to work sometimes late at night to do software deployments, you know? That's just something I have to do. That's not during the normal business hours and it's not good to do that during normal business hours, actually. Nobody likes to have their computers interrupted while they're working.
The last comment I had from Dave was on seven, two. Um, he put in a comment here. And we talked about this. I'm pretty sure we thought I thought we talked about this. Um, he said, why aren't department heads, this is in the section for disciplinary actions? Um, I don't recall why the department heads are excluded from this and what is the process for those positions if it is excluded here?
Well, it says shall.
I don't think it was excluded, was it?
Shall not include any of the following positions.
Right.
So.
Well, it says an employee appointed by the mayor, including departments, department heads. So that's excluding it from this process.
Yes.
Right.
So shouldn't shouldn't, so why, yeah, shouldn't they be?
Generally, appointed employees in the government, appointed employees don't have the same rights to contest their discharge or their discipline when they're an appointed employee. Um.
That kind of at will.
Right, exactly.
So is it an employee appointed by the mayor, which may include department heads?
Including department.
Not necessarily including department heads. Are all department heads assigned, appointed?
Uh, that's a good question. Are they?
They're assigned to be department heads.
So we said all department heads are not getting the benefits that the regular employees have.
Related to discipline.
Right.
Like that progressive.
Further grievance procedure.
Because they can be fired at any time for no reason.
Right. And if they were included here, then we couldn't fire them for any reason without them being able to say, wait, no, I want my hearing. I want my.
But then they should be defined as an appointed position if that's the case.
Uh, yeah, and maybe they are. I don't know. Actually, I don't know if we did appointed. Uh, we just list them there with the appointed is what it is.
Is it worth adding a like a just a sentence there that just says department heads are considered appointed employees?
Their position of department head is appointed.
Yeah, they're 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 not appointed employees.
No.
So I think we just, I think we do leave it so that they're not appointed, but they don't have the rights that the normal employees do, unless you want them to have that ability to their disciplinary grievances and all of that.
I guess that's just.
They they kind of have a, because they're in a position, they should know better on pretty much everything.
I guess I feel like the wording is still like, is an employee appointed by the mayor, including department heads? So that's what I mean. Are all department heads appointed or are some not? Like, I don't know.
It is appointed employees and and department heads in this category who are excluded from this.
So maybe it should say and department heads instead of including cuz that implies that department heads are appointed employees. No, I might be nitpicking that.
No, 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 that's, it's fine. And or, yeah, we could say.
And is there any positions outside of the department heads that are appointed by the mayor?
I don't know.
Alone, no.
We don't have that many positions.
Well, pretty much everything else is appointed, goes through city council, like planning commission, you know, all this other kind of stuff.
Okay, so I did, I just put and.
And then do we just need to, do we need to say, do we have anything in there that says like, you know, um, appointed employees, you know? That kind of says like, even though, you know, yes, you're outside of this progressive disciplinary schedule, but you're, you know, as part of that, your employment is at kind of the will of the mayor?
Uh, no, we don't need to cuz they're, if they are appointed, then it is at will. And state law actually covers appointed. We'll just follow the state law statute on appointed employees. It'll be easier.
Okay, we're five minutes before, right?
That's all, that's all the comments that I had written here.
Not through mine.
Hey.
Okay.
Are we good?
Yep.
Sure. There's nothing to put on the next agenda.
I'm good with it.
It's a significant improvement over what we had. I think it's important to have a policy.
Because I I was prepared to go, okay, because it's gonna be on the seventh, that if we need to, we were gonna have another work session on the thirtieth. So.
I'm good with it on the.
I'm glad I only had seven comments.
Well, I'm just.
He's trying to blackmail us.
I want anyone to say that I'm delaying the process. And Boyd is not gonna be able to make it tonight because we have a procedure. Yeah, there's three. It doesn't all matter. It's always three. However, when there is just three, it has to be unanimous. There can be no no's. It's three yes votes. That's how Dave Church put it. It's like three, three yes votes. No matter how many you have. Yeah, yeah, thanks for keeping that.
Yeah, I got it. Thanks. I know it was dark when it came here.
Sit over here if you want. Why'd you be right in front of the podium? Well, Josh, I'm gonna have to pick on you for praying, if you don't mind. I had Dave down, but Dave's not here. I don't, I thought so. You've heard the Dave's not here thing before, haven't you? teaching John. Hey, it's Dave. Dave's not here, man. I just always think of that when I hear a Dave. Don't you?
What?
Dave's not here. You know about that, don't you?
No.
teaching John.
I mean, I like teaching John.
They had that little thing when back when we listened to vinyl, they had the guy, dude, it's Dave. Guy yelling, Dave's not here, man. No, it's Dave. I'm here. Dave's not here, man. You can tell who Tommy Chong is on that, man. I do a pretty good Tommy Chong.
Me too.
Terrible, huh? Agenda. Yeah. Huh? Yeah, whatever it says on the flyer. Katie will read the pledge.
Yes, I will.
You know, did you notice other new flag? With fringe. We still have the other one, just in case for special events.
In case the petition lands.
Make your voice heard. Okay, depending on which clock I look at, the computer says it's seven, so bring this uh, meeting order, city council, um, November sixteenth, twenty twenty three. Uh, we're gonna have an opening ceremony. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Katie and a prayer offered by Josh.
Please rise and repeat after me.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly father, we come before thee this day with gratitude in our hearts for the many blessings that thou has given unto us here in the city and in this great country. We're grateful for those that are gathered here today to, to support the, the work that is going on here. And we pray that as we counsel together and we work together as community, we'll be able to have peace and we'll be able to respect each other and be mindful of one another. We do pray for those in the world that are afflicted, that are struggling and suffering, that thou would watch over and bless them. And we give thee thanks once again for all that we have and do so in the name of Jesus Christ.
Hey, um, next on the agenda, comments and reports. First one is public comments. Anyone from the public like to make comments? Anyway, anyway. Oh, I thought you were getting him to come give a comment there, Lyle. Oh, you're getting ready for the next thing. Okay, report from planning commission. Well, you can do it with the mic from there if you want. Okay.
Okay, we held our regular, hold on, sorry. Gotta get my cheat sheet out. We had our regular meeting last Thursday and we had a work session at six P M regarding the M one zone. And, uh, then we, uh, went into our regular meeting and we had a public hearing for a conditional use permit for Steve Sexton, and it's on the agenda tonight. And that was, that went through. And, uh, then also we had a, a gent item for the, uh, site plan approval or denial for Tesla. They were not in attendance, and so we tabled it because we had, even though it's part of the major, it was, you know, kind of an extended extension of the original property, we still had questions about it. They were notified that they were supposed to be here, but they never showed up. So we tabled it until get back. And then we set a public hearing for the fourteenth to consider the approval of the amendments to the M one zone. And we approved the minutes, reported on assignments and adjourned.
Okay, thanks, Lyle. Any questions for Lyle? None? Thank you very much. Okay, and assignments and directions for the planning commission? We can, do we have any new ones for them? It's getting towards the end of the year. We don't want to have too much more.
We're good.
We're good?
Well, I know they're trying to finish up the M one and the.
Yeah. Continue doing what you're doing. You're doing great. How's that?
Time is to enjoy the holidays.
Yes, that, that as well. And make sure you tell Mackenzie what you want to eat. I think that's the most important thing right now. Okay, uh, next consent item is consider approval of minutes dated November second, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for November second, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, Katie, Josh are motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consider approval of bills dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Josh and Janelle are motion second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Now on to business items. Okay, consider approval of the rezone of the Fisher family homestead property located approximately thirteen hundred north, two thousand west. Partial numbers are all written down there. I'm not going to read them out from A one to zone to the C two commercial zone. Uh, and I believe this was, uh, consistent with the general plan and recommended by, uh, planning commission. Is anyone from the Fisher family here to represent? Come on up in case there's a question. And ju- just give us a quick overview of what we're rezoning.
Where we're building, where we hope we're building the assisted living, it's the property south of it where the machinery is parked right now. We need it rezoned so we can unfortunately sell it so we can finance the assisted living because interest rates have gone ridiculous and we need more money down.
Hey, any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezone of the Fisher family homestead property from A one to C two.
I'll second.
Hey, Katie, Josh are motion second. We'll do this roll call. Janelle?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
That's all you need.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, consider approval of a conditional use permit for a twenty-five hundred and fifty-two square foot accessory building for Steve Sexton located twenty-fourty-one west, thirty-three seventy-five north. Is Mr. Sexton here? Not that he absolutely needs to be. How does the council feel? Do you need to ask me any questions? Good, the setbacks are there. It was recommended by planning commission, so.
I know planning commission goes through these.
I feel comfortable with, with the approval from the planning commission and I'll make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Steven Sexton.
I'll second.
Hey, Katie, Josh are motion second. Josh?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle? All it takes. Thank you. Uh, consider final approval of the far west business park subdivision located at twelve forty-six north, two thousand west. I think you guys here for, just in case there's a question, please come on up. So this is the subdivision. Are there any questions?
I did have one, one second, let me get down there.
This is up the subdivision to start with. The site plan is the next thing.
Then my question was on the site plan, so.
Okay, um, any questions on site? Or, I mean, you messed with me with the subdivision.
I'll make a motion to, um, can give final approval of the far west business park subdivision.
Hey.
I'll second.
Janelle and Katie are motion second. Janelle?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Okay, that's all you need on that. The next one, approval of the site plan of far west business park located same place. They did get their U dot letter, I believe. That was forwarded. So I think that was the last thing the planning commission was concerned about. And, um, so now any further questions?
Uh, the one thing that I just wanted to put on the record was the comment from the Weaver fire, what was with the building code for each space requiring a man door, and they asked you to verify it with the building official. So just wanted to make sure you got with, um, our building department before and then check with them on that one.
Yeah, yeah, that's easy.
Okay.
It looks like they have doors in the back already, right?
Yeah, are you referring?
On that little tiny.
Are you referring to something outside of the man door that's already on the building design? There's a man door into each individual unit on the back next to the garage.
Oh, they look like bays to me. So I thought.
Front, there's bays and then on the back, there's these little man doors.
Oh, and this is what they were referring to as the back?
Yeah.
Okay, I think so. Oh, maybe not.
And I might, was that something that they sent us? I don't, you recall seeing anything from Weaver?
It was on their plan review.
Highlighted.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I see it.
Great, okay.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yep.
Motion?
I'll consider approval. Nope. I'll recommend approval. Nope. My motion is that we approve. I go to too many planning commission meetings.
Hanging out with Lyle?
I motion that we approve the site plan of the far west business park located at twelve forty-six north, two thousand west.
I'll second.
Okay, Janelle and Josh are motion second. Josh?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
All you need. You're approved and ready to rock and roll.
Thank you very much.
When, when you come, come visit us again. Are you done with us?
Coming every week.
We'll, uh, we'll find another project, but thank you so much. This has been a great process. Geneva especially has been fantastic to work with, so. Look forward to putting a nice project there for you.
Hey, thank you. Okay, uh, the next item is consider approval of an interlocal agreement with Weaver County for guaranteed waste stream. Okay, let me explain this a little bit. So in WACOG, they had a presentation about this. The transfer station wants a guarantee that our garbage is going to go to them. Luckily, in our contract with Econo Waste, it states that. And so that's what they've asked us to do. They just want this all in writing and maybe, um, Liam understands why they want to do all of this, because I didn't know there was such a competition for garbage.
Is there?
Well, it's just staying in business, right?
Depends on who you are, I guess. But yeah, this, this is just, uh, this interlocal essentially, under state law municipalities are required for the most part to dump their solid waste at a facility owned by another public entity. So this is just saying, hey, because you're in Weaver County, we want you to use Weaver County's. We'll give you the Weaver County rates. As, I, I mean, I don't know where else we would go. I guess there's Box Elder or Davis, but good luck. So it just memorializes it all in writing.
We'll get assigned all kinds of things. So, so that's what that's all about. So, and do you guys have any more questions about it? I'm sure.
One question, there was one line in here that I wanted to ask Liam about and it was, um, let me find it.
There was a little bit of discussion in WACOG about defining curbside.
Well, first question, do we, and, and this is just, I'm going to pose the question, knowing that there's not really any other place that would, our trash would go locally here. Would we foresee this if there was? Would this cause any issues or like maybe act to our detriment in any like future RFP processes?
I don't know.
Well, I guess the only detriment would be if your RFP included somebody from Box Elder County or Davis County who wanted to use the transfer facility in their county. Then we'd have to say, well, we have an agreement with Weaver County to do it in Weaver County, so figure it out.
Our agreement is with Econo Waste and Econo Waste has agreed with us that they're going to take the transfer.
Right, and they're in Weaver County.
Yes.
Roy, I think, is where they're located.
And that was the other question I had. It kind of spelled out like if it is our, will ours be, it was like, it will be either paid this way or this way. And it was like, you know, the city will pay the bill to the county or the, like, the county will bill the, the waste transfer.
Right.
Is that how we current, it's currently operating?
Yes.
They bill us for what they take there?
Yes, I get to sign a check for those.
And then, hold on, it was here somewhere.
And we're charged by the town.
Okay, um, there is, Liam, this is a question for you for D. So since this agreement relates to the use of the county's transfer station, voting shall be weighted in favor of the county with the county's vote outweighing the city's vote on any vote required by this agreement. I mean, why would, why, why is that necessary?
Because it was in there in the prior interlocal agreement and everything that got copied and pasted just went over. And this is the same agreement for every city in Weaver County. So basically what it's saying is should the city disagree, what it goes back to is should the city disagree with the rates that the county is charging at the transfer station, the county can say, no, it's our transfer station, it's our rates, you abide by them.
I mean, then why are we signing, like, why are we signing an agreement?
Well, because we, because the county owns the transfer station. So you guys have to deposit your solid waste in a trans, in a facility owned by another public entity per state law. So.
But as a, and that's our legal representative. You don't see any issues with that?
Oh, no. I mean, it's, if we had a stake in the transfer facility, I'd see an issue with that, but it's all solely owned by Weaver County.
Thank you.
Hey. I got that. I'll clear it up. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Weaver County.
I'll second.
Okay, Josh and Katie are, uh, motion and second. Janelle?
Aye.
Katie?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
That's a hundred percent of, or of all of us that are here, except me. Okay, so that passes. Moving on to mayor council follow-up report on assignments. Josh, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, I'll keep it fast tonight. Um, I'm sure board meetings are next week and I don't have anything else different from two weeks ago, so I'm done.
Thanks. Thanks, Josh. Okay, Katie?
Going for.
Um, I, I'm, I'm going to get with Roberta at the senior city center and just see if I can have, what support I can give her on planning the Christmas dinner. Um, I just asked Janelle if I've gotten way behind on Christmas planning stuff. So we're going to put our heads together and get something put together for Christmas and.
Only next month.
I've been, I've been in a feeling like if I can delay, if I, in my mind, a delay is not coming, so. And now it's like here. So I think that's it.
Okay. Janelle?
Okay, um, the only thing I really have to report on this, the parks meeting yesterday, um, we're finally making some progress on the dock. Lyle's been doing a ton of work on getting hold of people at Peterson and, and Tom to engineer it. So, um, he's on it and there's finally some progress. So that's great news. Um, we do have, what, twenty-eight months to complete it, but. But I don't, I know you're not going to wait twenty-eight months. Um, and then, um, I looked at that grant tracking sheet the other day and was going to see if I could maybe do one of those like letters of intent. You know what I mean? Those are pretty.
I've got a draft one for the park that I'll send you right now.
Um, and then I said I would work on getting some updated pricing like from Garrett. We'd gotten a bid for, um, playground equipment for last year's grants applications, grant applications, but we need an updated, um, pricing along with like itemized stuff because Nate said we need to kind of give each supplier the same kind of plan and get pricing that way. So I am working on that and working on reaching out to the community to see what kind of matching funds we might be able to count on to include. So that's, I think, all I've got.
Okay, thank you, Janelle. Thank you, everybody. Okay, so this was a very busy couple of weeks since the, the last meeting. So WACOG came along, so I went to that. Uh, one of the discussions was about the Weaver senior centers. Um, they're consolidating all the Weaver senior centers into four around the county. And these are the ones that they provide services for. Apparently they hire their people and they take care of all of that kind of stuff. We're, uh, we're one of the small cities that we have our own, so it really doesn't affect us whatsoever. But that was some of their discussion. I didn't really know that they did all that they did for those. Um, we did have a discussion on the transfer station. We already talked about that. There was an amended request by Mayor Sliderville for an additional, uh, million sixty-three thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and, and eighty-three cents for the seventeen hundred widening project. I don't know where the eighty-three cents would go towards, but that's how much more money they need for that project that was, um, approved. Um, so obviously when things run a little bit shy, you can ask for more apparently. Um, the other thing we did vote on, uh, was the transportation priority list. I went over this last time, so um, what the subcommittee recommended was, you know, the whole list and there were two for far west, those that were all, um, once again recommended from WACOG to go to, um, the county commission. I'm pretty confident about the county commission because two of the members of the subcommittee are commissioners. And that's all you need is two. So those are for the, uh, so that's a million fifty-eight thousand for the thirty-three hundred north phase one project and nine hundred thousand dollars for the seventeen forty west little extension thing there at the Jimmy John's going south. So those will be moving forward. Those are targeted for funds for, I think it's twenty twenty-six. So these are all years down the road, but they have to be approved ahead of time. That gives us time to, you know, get whatever else we need to.
Does that cover the entire cost of those projects or is there additional that needs to?
There, no, that's.
That's it? Awesome.
That's just how much they're contributing.
So we'll need more.
Well, we have to contribute at least ten percent.
Okay.
So that's a new rule.
Or, I mean, if you don't have it, you can just go ask them later.
Yes.
But, okay, that, that's actually a good point because even when you ask for additional.
You have to add.
You have to add ten percent, contribute ten percent. So they're getting a million, but that means they're, you know, a hundred thousand they have to come up with. So none of this is free. They want to make sure that we all have skin in the game and I think that's, uh, very common anymore. Okay, I also attended the housing subcommittee meeting. I presented for far west. I presented our strategies and our progress. And what I did to present our progress was basically what we're doing with, uh, the proposed mixed use, because that's about as much progress as we've actually made towards our strategies. I didn't really think the whole strategies thing was very fair because we came up with strategies and then six months later, they wanted to know how are we done yet? And it's like, that's not really fair, especially in this market, right, with interest rates and whatnot. It's, but it is what it is, presented that. And, um, so, and this housing subcommittee was kind of being ran by, they call it the center of excellence down in the basement of the Weaver Center. Well, that's now been, for whatever reason, disbanded as part of, of the health department. It doesn't mess up the housing subcommittee. We're going to still keep doing that, but we may not be meeting in the basement anymore, so. It doesn't mess up the housing subcommittee. We're gonna still keep doing that, but we may not be meeting in the basement anymore. So that's what happened in there. Last night, I attended a Trails Foundation, uh, meeting. But we thanked all the outgoing board members. We talked about Trail Mixer and its success and their need for more memberships. That's how they raise funds for a lot of the things that they do. And, um, they also talked a little bit about, so there's this author dinner. So if anybody's interested in going to a dinner at the timber mine for in March, there's this author called Ann Hillerman. Has anybody ever heard of Ann Hillerman? She's written very, uh, a few books. Uh, she's, uh, does quite a bit with the Navajo Nation and whatnot. And if you've heard of Dark Winds, I think that's an AMC C television series. She was a part of that. If you don't know anything about it, then you don't know anything about Ann Hillerman. So supposed to be awesome. It's open and available to anybody who would like to go. Um, the LPC, the Legislative Policy, uh, Committee, I also missed it.
I tried to get on that stupid thing for twenty minutes.
I, Monday was just a crazy day. Um, part of that, partly because we were preparing for what happened later that evening. We had a Wasatch Front Regional Council workshop over here in the senior center, and it had to do with trails. And I'd like to thank everybody who showed up. That was a, um, very good and uh, collaborative discussion. It's a good time. This is where plans begin, you know, when everybody gets out maps and they start drawing on them, going, this is where we want to do these kinds of things. These are things for the twenty fifty vision. So we are thinking May ahead of time. They talked about the new Utah Trails Network. I don't know if anybody's heard much about that that weren't at the meeting, but basically that's where uh, somebody with some money is, uh, they've got available forty-five million dollars upfront and then forty-five billion dollars possibly per year after that to, um, implement all these, uh, trail systems throughout the state. So that's pretty exciting. Uh, what most of us hope is that they don't eat up all of that money just in talking about it. They actually, you know, put it toward building the pathways and active transportation that is the community's desire. I also met with Chris Wilste with Bike Utah. That was earlier that day, and he's gonna start on our active transportation plan. Um, he offered to do it for free, and I'm gonna take him up on that for free. We did an active transportation plan about four years ago. Lou, wasn't that about right? And, um, we did a really good job, but it doesn't hurt to let a professional take a look at it and improve on it for us. So, and if he's gonna do it for free, why wouldn't we let him? I also sparked, uh, spoke with, uh, Charlie Ewer. He's with, uh, Weaver County, uh, planning. And, um, you know how we have this really nice pathway on four thousand north that parallels four thousand north? It's, you know, but it goes from Smith Emily Park all the way to the end of the city. It's supposed to make it all the way to the rail trail. We kind of pressured them a little bit by doing that ahead of time. He told me that they've, uh, they're planning on it because the rest of it's Weaver County. Um, that whole project is going out to bid here soon. So that means they're actually going to connect it. And I kind of nudged him a little bit going, did the pressure help a little bit? He goes, well, it didn't hurt. You know, because the, there's no sense in having a trail down nowhere, right? And, um, one final thing I wanted to do was, I think that Janelle's last meeting is gonna be this one.
Yes, I'm gonna be out of town.
You're not gonna be here for the seventh, and we may cancel the next one. So I just wanted to thank you for your, uh, everything you've done.
Well, you're welcome.
In public.
What?
Yeah, I'm doing it in a public meeting, thanking you. You'll probably get plenty of other thanks too, but I just wanted to thank you. You stepped up when, uh, basically she took my spot when I took this chair. She's actually sitting in my chair. And that's where I sat. Huh?
I don't want to switch you this time.
You don't want to sit here? Okay, because that was my chair, uh, for many, many years, both on planning commission and city councils. So now, um, we're gonna have somebody new sitting down there, and it's probably gonna be one of those three gentlemen in the back. Just guessing.
Well, thanks. It's been like
Thank you very much.
What I tell people and they're like, oh, how is that? I said, you know what? The biggest takeaway for me has been is how much work it takes to run a city, both from like employees and volunteers. Like, you don't know how much goes behind the scenes until you sit in meetings and you see how much time and energy people put in, and it's just made me really grateful for residents who are willing to step up and do a lot of work, so.
So you think that the, um, hundred some odd dollars per year that people pay in property taxes well, doing a good job so far?
Yes, and yes, it's been, it's been a very good experience.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. And you're not going away, because
No.
By the way, she announced, and I'm, I also announced, she's gonna help us with our parade on the fourth. Because, you know, everybody says you have to do at least, you have to at least do it twice. And Josh, I'm gonna thank you too, but you're still gonna be here for another meeting. But thank, thank you anyway. Hopefully you'll still be around to bug every once in a while.
Yep.
As well.
I just seem to bounce back and forth. You were over there on the planning commission. I was over here on the planning commission, so. When you were over there on the city council, I was, you know, so.
Yeah, it's kind of a reoccurring nightmare in some cases, you know. And it's good. And some of those guys out there are sitting out there where we used to sit from time to time. And we have one last agenda item.
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, Josh and Janelle are motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you. Excuse me? J and J? That's how I wrote it down. Yeah, I know. Yeah, he moved to Virginia. Yeah, so on, on Facebook, they were like, opposed to here. I'm like, why does it look like you're on this long road all the time? Because they, they always had this picture of this long, for you, I think they probably took I seventy all the way there. Yeah, yeah, that was.